I want to do this.
Okay. Uh, can you stand for the pledge to the flag? Please. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call the meeting in order at six oh one. Agenda is all set, so we're gonna go directly into presentations.
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah.
The last question, if I have anyone on camera.
Uh, right by the podium.
Right. So, what program today, now that Mr. McNutt did a lot of the talking for the course, is a new course to be offered within our CTE course offering at ACADE called Fine Woodworking. So Sean, if you wanna elaborate a little bit on your vision for the course, why you're coming up with the proposition, where you think you can take it? I'd like you to explain that.
So, Fine Woodworking is a course to introduce students into kind of the fine art of woodworking and some of the different things that we can do with woodworking. They'll explore different career paths that they can go into, such as chemistry and furniture making. It might even expose them into the idea of possibly becoming a technology education teacher. In the course, they'll be able to see kind of what these different career paths, what do they do, and kind of that aspect of it. And then they'll be able to learn how to budget for equipment and how to maintain equipment. And then they'll learn all sorts of different woodworking skills with different joinery. So, how to put different, how to put pieces of furniture together and use different joints for different purposes, for different, depending on circumstance and what the, what it's gonna be used for, might use different joinery for different things. They'll explore different types of projects leading up to a final project where they kind of combine all the skills they learned into a final large product, where they build a piece of furniture such as a pen table or desk or something like that.
And I, well Sean came to me with a proposition earlier. Sean teaches an MST course this year, math, science, technology course. It's an every other year course. And on those offerings, there was room in his schedule, and what he, what he sold me on is the idea that he could open all our kids' eyes to the skills beyond what they get at seventh grade tech and eighth grade tech. And the trades are just huge right now. A lot of students are, are leaving us for going college, going into these various trades. And I know there's a lot of room to expand some of our offerings down in that wing. This course sounds like a good, a good option for some markets.
So with this, can I ask questions? May I ask?
Oh, yes, please.
So, this is only gonna be every other year? Is it a semester? Is that what I read?
Yeah.
One semester?
Nine semester course.
Just out of curiosity, do you think your students will have enough time with the forty minute classes to actually produce something enough to give them satisfaction and encouragement to pursue it?
Yes. Well, I've been exploring some, some small Fine Woodworking projects with the middle school students. One of them being legate turning projects, so they made pens and game calls this year that I've done some of. So, they, so a couple students have actually made duck calls and doe calls. And they also made, made pens that they could actually use and write with. So, it's kind of a very small kind of aspect of it, but it does take some skills to be able to, using the label, going over all those things and being able to take a something that's a piece of square stock, turn it into something that's round, and, and making it into something that's usable.
And I'll add to that too, that this is currently proposed as something that will run every other day. So it'll run all year, just on the every other day basis. There's no saying that on office hours, kids couldn't come down on some of the days where they don't have class and maybe work on projects. There's a lot of room to expand those forty minutes.
So it's really not a semester course? It's just?
We label those as semester courses based on the number of hours. It's a semester course.
Yeah, okay.
But offered every other day.
Okay.
And it looked like you had good numbers, it seemed like, when I was reading through.
Kids are still signing up now, so we won't know the extent of how many kids are interested, but with Sean, I'll be checking with kids, you know.
Would that impact the budget then, for the, for the actual class? Cause it looks like it's running from nine to twelve.
We're currently budgeting for, we think we can run the course, and you can jump in if I get one of us wrong. Then I have the technical aspect of the tool. We think we can run the course with, with a few hundred dollars worth of expenditures, but really to do what we want, we're looking at a five to six thousand dollar expenditure on some equipment, a planer and a jointer that can do some of the big furniture pieces.
Sure.
So we're looking to budget that, depending on how things go. If we have to scale back, we're prepared for that too.
I would imagine it'd be an initial cost upfront, and then some of those tools would be able to, be able to have over the course of several years.
Right.
And it was nine through twelve?
Yep.
Any plans for a, a second level?
There could be plans for a second level, advancing some of the skills that they learn and, and going into even a deeper dive into what else can they do with, with some of these skills. If we get possibly, I know some schools have kind of extended the Fine Woodworking course out to a strictly furniture making course, so that it's, it's a possibility that it can expand into something such as that.
It would depend on his availability as an instructor as well.
Right.
We know that opposite of the MST course, we'd have to look at the offerings and see what kind of room there was before we decided to expand.
Are you gonna bring in guest speakers or people who actually make their living with this? I know several people, that's why I'm thinking, wow, I could see that, that you could really catch someone's attention with this class.
Right.
And they could find a career.
Right. Depending on the circumstances, obviously with the COVID pandemic, it's really difficult to get guest speakers to come, but when things clear up, I definitely, I have some connections in different areas. My uncle works for a chemistry company, and I've got a couple other friends that have their own working businesses. So it'd be, it is a possibility to have guest speakers come in, kind of talk about what they do, how they run their businesses, and how their work applies to some of the things that we're doing in class. How is it similar? How is it different?
Is there any way this could go in conjunction with a entrepreneurial course or a business course, where they could learn the business aspect of it, so they could leave here?
The sky's the limit with something like this. You know, the idea is to get it off the ground, it's successful, get kids interested, and then once you, once you have a class like this that takes off, the sky's the limit for what, how you might expand it should, if there's a sure possibility, but cool idea.
With that program that's already in existence, I don't, I'm sorry that I don't recall what it's cost, where a student can come up with an idea and then market it? I believe you have somebody that's marketing Buffalo Bill's mask now. So?
The live program, yes.
Is that something they could hook into?
Like I said, I think, I think there's all kinds of possibilities like that. And I think that would really engage kids in the process of, you're not just making this, but now you're making this with the idea that there are other steps in the entrepreneurial process. So, without saying that we're committing to that, we're saying the sky's the limit of those kind of options, if we can get it to take off.
Is there currently anything with the BOSEs, you know, they have building trades, but is that more of rough carpentry type? Right. Both BOSEs is more rough carpentry, more building trades, and I guess more, more construction framing and that sort of stuff.
Sounds cool.
Good. Is there an age limit of who can take the course?
High school, nine to twelve.
Oh, darn. Okay.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay. If the minutes, if yours out with the minutes of the December fifteenth, twenty twenty regular meeting be approved, we'll get a motion.
So moved.
Florida, motion.
Second.
And Justin, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Passes. Visitors requests. All right. So we're onto the first reading, three policies.
So I provided the board three policies. Again, nothing real earth shattering here. The first policy and the third policy go hand in hand. The first policy is just an update to our Dignity for All Students Act. You may refer to it as the DASSA. We came across with KC doing extensive work with our emergency plans and the new, you know, continuity of, of learning and how we proceed if there's an outbreak in, in, you know, a disease or a pandemic. Part of that, we found that our just, our DASSA policy is very, very old and needs to have some updated information in there. So it's really just kind of renewing that policy. The nondiscrimination and anti harassment kind of falls in line with that. Once again, it's just updating some of the information that's in there. Our last policy was from two thousand twelve, so we need to update the information in there. Part of that is appointing civil rights compliance officers, and Christine and I will take on that responsibility because it does separate us as far as an administrator goes from a specific building or, you know, staff members. So that policy needs to be updated. And the middle policy is the independent study policy that I'm providing to the board all these are first readings, based really upon our notion that that independent study that kind of was intertwined with the remote learning policy. We wanted to separate those, so I received a updated independent study policy from year one BOSEs. There's also a regulation attached to that, and basically it just provides general provisions on what, if we were ever to have a student do an independent study, what those protocols and parameters are. Again, these are all first readings, so certainly don't need to be approved now, but they're just for your review. And if you certainly have any questions, let me know.
I have one question on the first policy.
The first policy?
Um, yeah. Where did I find that? It says that, third paragraph.
What, what page is that?
Page, the first page, subject dignity for all students, third paragraph.
That's it.
Uh, in addition, other acts of harassment, bullying, blah, 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 that occur off school property may be subject to discipline or other corrective action.
Yes.
How, how can we discipline someone at school for something that occurred off school property?
Because come Monday morning, if employees or students come into the building and there's a, a fear of the work environment being tarnished because of something that had happened, we certainly have the right to investigate that. So for an example, if, let's say harassing text messages are going back and forth between students or even just between colleagues and faculty, just because it happened on a Friday night doesn't mean we're gonna not have issues come Monday morning. So, you know, for an example, and I did have this issue in a prior district, there were some threatening text messages going back in between colleagues. And I was made aware of it. It happens. I was made aware of it Monday morning, and the one teacher would not show up to school for fear of being hurt. And just because the interaction happened over the weekend doesn't exclude them from, you know, paying the piper. So that's why that's in there.
So that's where the other corrective action would come in?
Correct.
I just wondered how we could?
When, when someone feels that, yeah, when someone feels that their work environment is being disrupted, or it talks here where forcibly create a risk of substantial disruption within the school environment, that's where the issue lies.
So this applies to both staff and students?
Yes. Both buildings do have dignity act coordinators. Lynn and Matt are the, are obviously the principals and the leaders of their building. So if any of that involves a student, Lynn and Matt are the dignity act coordinators. There's, there's training that goes along with this, and they need to be appointed yearly.
So just to be sure, what if, sorry Lynn and Matt, what if they're, they become the harassers or the bullies? Then where do people go?
Then that would come to me.
Okay.
And then that's why there's a distinction between the civil rights compliance officer? That's why it's?
Correct. That's kind of why these policies go hand in hand.
Right.
Yes, absolutely.
Cause that would be?
Yep.
The next?
Yep.
Right. And John, what is, is there trained, DASSA training at the beginning of the year for teachers, or how does that, how do you, how do you go over this?
Yes and no, very informally. Usually sometimes it's a part of the code of conduct and you, you tell the staff to read it. Sometimes we quickly on opening day, spend a few minutes going over it. If you're, if you're a teacher and don't know what DASSA stands for, that's an issue, but yeah, I, you know, just there's, it's quick.
Yeah. I, I know, I used to sit through long, long training.
And that's, that's when it, yeah, that's kind of when it came out years ago, and now it's more of a?
A lot of times it's just a video, you gotta ask or answer a few questions, and then prove that you did it, and then move on.
Correct.
So throughout this policy, I see the words, where'd they go? Based on a person's actual or perceived, blah, 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 blah. Are those the actual or perceived, perceived by whom? Like, if I'm gonna harass you cause you're a Bills fan, is that because you perceive yourself to be a Bills fan and I can harass you? Or if I perceive you to be?
Correct. It's to the individual. Yes. It's?
So is it my perception or the victim's perception?
Well, it, it's kind of both, in a sense. It depends on, you know, the individual themselves, on, they're all protected classes. So it really depends on the situation. If, if another student is harassing another student because, and really it works both ways, of a perceived identity, it depends on the interaction, how you perceive yourself and what the person is perceiving you as. That's the conflict. So to answer your question, it's in both terms.
So there's an emphasis on making the employees aware of all this?
Correct.
Is there, how are the students gonna become aware of all this?
Students are, maybe, we do have a form that, that we use. The students, depending on the situation that they're in, don't come to us and say, this is a DASSA complaint. They just come to us with a varied variety of complaints. It's up to the administrators to decide and to indicate whether this falls under a DASSA. We have to report that at the end of the year to the state. So really, kids won't come to us and say, I fall under the Dignity for All Students Act and, you know, this and this and that. They'll just come to us with a bullying harassment complaint, and then really it's up to Matt and Lynn and the administrators to decide if it falls under such, such one of these categories.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
And for the independent study, just a quick question on that. Could that, could that, Matt, could that be, could you, could it be done like remote, like let's say there's an AP class in Lindenville or some, could, could that be something that?
Let's say?
I, I don't mean to pin you down on any one specific thing, but I was just thinking like, there's gotta be courses that are offered in other school districts that?
So I wouldn't, and I haven't explored working with another school district to provide that service. I have explored, and we used a program called Mentor last year, where we provided students with coursework that was provided for us online with, these are New York State certified instructors. And I know that as part of those offerings, AP courses were part of it, so really you could have taken just about any course, and to have a power is needed by the study. Now, we did need here an instructor on record. So it was some hurdles that I thought, well, if we're gonna do that in the future, maybe we'll just work within our own teachers.
Sure.
And see if we can provide it.
And that, was that a maximum of, I think it was three credit hours for their entire nine through twelve?
For the independent study?
Yeah.
I think that sounds correct.
Okay. Just, so that's the maximum? They couldn't go exceed the three credit hours?
I think that sounds correct. I'll have to look it up to confirm that.
Okay. Just, I'm just curious, I?
That's what it says in the first.
It's way out of fourth grade for me, that's a, it's a.
Justin, I know the superintendents, because of the situation we're in, and, you know, who would've thought, you know, two years ago we'd, we'd be in here? I mean, I remember having distance learning labs, where we went to a classroom to talk to a professor and see a class. So one of, the answer really to your question is possibly.
I think it's a correct.
That if there's a course, and we work with, let's say Pembroke, and there's a course that maybe a few kids wanna take here, in, you know, again, I'm not gonna say that that's, you know, a possibility, I mean, it is a possibility, but, you know, if something like that is, is very necessary and it meets the needs of, of everybody involved, I can, I can certainly see that happening in the future.
But then that's where I wonder, does it have to be restricted to just three credit hours, or is that somewhere, somewhere else, or that's the maximum in some state laws? I, I don't know.
Prior to this, this policy, independent studies were actually only for elective courses. That's why it was limited to three. We eliminated that because there is possibility that there might involve situations where we could do a independent study for a Regents course. It's just how you all code it and, you know, prepare for that in school tool and report it to the state. So we removed the elective courses, but mainly this policy focuses on elective courses.
Okay. That makes sense.
Are there any conflicts with the contract, teacher's contract with this?
No. And part of the policy for the independent study says that the teacher of record and the teachers will be a part of this process. We would not force somebody to do this. We would all sit down and make sure that the situation is absolutely one hundred percent necessary for, you know, a kid to graduate, or we, you know, that, that, you know, we're just not gonna all of a sudden say, oh, by the way, you wanna do an independent study? And have twenty of those floating around every single year. These are just for extreme cases where maybe we're trying to catch up a kid. We do have a lot of kids that do transfer into, into our district that when we review their records, they're, they're behind. They don't have enough credits, you know, and so this could be an opportunity where instead of a child sitting in study hall and maybe couldn't get into a class and working with the teacher of record, that, you know, they could, they could do some work remotely or as an independent study for, for credit, so.
That might be the most likely, to be honest with you. If you get a kid who's transferred into a school, he has a full schedule, and not eighteen minutes, December, January. We, we, our schedule's been done since last May. It's almost impossible to plug him into every class. And you don't wanna say, okay, we've been in AP Biology for four months, now we have to drop it. That would be a classic, you know, case for an independent study. We work in a.
Any other questions on the three policies? Okay. We're going to approval warrants be resolved after an audit of bills, came with the twelve twenty-two and one six warrants, internal claims, auditor reports be approved, a motion? Motion. Repeat.
Second.
And Justin? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Treasurer's report be resolved with treasurer's report for November twenty twenty be approved? Get a motion.
So moved.
Move again. Is that Jackie? Jackie has a second?
Jackie's second.
So we'll do Dan and the motion, and Jackie the second. So I'm helping tear out.
Sounds like an option.
There's paddles, was it?
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Christine?
I'm gonna present title on our first pass on our budget. Um, am I good? Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, Johnny. So, um, we've been doing some work on our budget for this year, for the coming fiscal year, and I wanted to give you a little bit of an update on that. I'm gonna start out talking to you a little bit about our budget, last thing, what we're looking to go into it, give you some historical data, take a look at revenue and expenses, and give you the bottom line on it, and talk about our setup. For our budget philosophy, we're really glad to make sure that we're focusing on, when we're putting this together, focusing on the students, their achievement, and continuing to provide programs and being able to support that, and also being very fiscally responsible to the, to the district, the parents, and the community as well. As you know, I'm sure you've seen this before, this is last year's data, but sixty-five percent of our budget is from state aid. And twenty-five percent comes from our tax levy. That's the, the biggest portion of it is state aid though, and it's a, it has a big impact, especially when we don't have that, all that information to give you, it's, it's difficult to pin down a number, but that's the biggest portion of our, our budget. Last year, this is a comparison of last year's to this year's, this is just an initial look at what we're looking at, what we think that the revenue budget might be. I am projecting right now, just for, for numbers, a flat real property test, and I'm projecting an increase at this time, just so that we can, we don't know yet what's gonna be coming down the pipe with the state, the governor's budget. So at this point in time, if I project everything flat, the, the numbers here, that's not gonna show me the mouse, the fourteen thousand two thirteen in state aid and the minor little increase, this is based on a NISCUS presentation that they put out in November, so these numbers aren't accurate, and we don't have the information from the governor yet, but based on those numbers, this is what we're showing. And as you can see, foundation aid's been flat for several years. I'm a little concerned about the number that they put out for transportation, and I think that's a little bit high for next year's aid based on this year and the prior year. But it's coming out to be fourteen thousand two thirteen for state aid. And again, these are November numbers, and we know that the governor's not gonna have final numbers out for us probably for another couple months. It's still very unclear where we're gonna end up with the governor's budget. There has been talk about the new money from the stimulus. We don't know if that's gonna replace his twenty percent threat of withholding of aid. But there, and there is an update, John has a document on your desk that talks a little bit about the governor's proposal that he talked about today. Again, it's still very preliminary, and it's gonna be a couple months before we really can pin that down. But he does have some more information on that, and we can talk about that. And also there was an issue last year that they talked about, it was pre-COVID, was consolidating the expense-based aids, and that might impact, you know, how things roll out. But again, it's all very preliminary. We won't have concrete numbers probably for another couple months. The other piece of our, big chunk of our budget, about twenty-five percent, is the tax cap, or the tax levy. And that's capped at either the lesser of two percent or CPI. And it's a formula, it's a very complicated formula, as you can see, there's a lot of, all these numbers right here along the side. Right now, based on preliminary data, I'm estimating for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year that we have a tax cap, we can raise the levy by only two point three one This'll show you a little bit of history of where we've been on the tax levy. Last year, we went out with a zero percent increase to the levy. We've always stayed below the tax levy. In fact, what we have, the only, over the last five years, our average increase was only point four percent. So we've, as far as, you know, as far as the tax levy, I feel that we've been fiscally responsible with that. Expand your assumptions. We're assuming things are gonna be back to normal next year, hopefully. That would assume then full athletic? That would assume then full athletics and full extracurricular activities and all the expenses that go along with that. Salaries that I calculated are, are based on, they're fixed as per the employment contracts. There's not much we can do with fluctuating on that. We're not anticipating any teacher retirements at this time. We did, I have included in these numbers, the potential for our halftime music teacher potentially shared with another district. John has more information on that as well, if there's any questions.
Yeah, if I can just expand on that. So, obviously, there were some resignations and some people leaving the district. And obviously, when those things happen, we certainly look at our resources and, and, you know, see if, you know, the need is there to replace. At the time that our last music teacher, you know, left the district, we were at a point where we just didn't know what the foreseeable future was going to bring. It was tough to replace, just because at that time, you know, could we get by with the staff that we had, not knowing where we were going to be? We, obviously, the administrative team always reviews this. And we believe that we need at least, well, I guess at most, at least, whatever you want to call it, a part-time music teacher back in the district. We don't ever want to reduce programming and services to our students, and right now, we're having a hard time getting some lessons down at the elementary school for our fourth and fifth graders. So, when talking to Lynn and Matt, we feel it necessary to add back in a part-time music teacher. In talking to a neighboring district, it looks like we may have a chance to utilize their halftime music teacher in our district. And I actually did speak to Dan earlier in regards to what does that look like? Maybe if, if that teacher becomes a BOSI's teacher? And obviously, if we have a teacher that is now shared between two districts, that's under a certain co-serve, and some funds can be hatable, that would save both districts. So, we're just pursuing that right now. But like Christine said, we did put that back in the budget for next year to, to possibly bring back the halftime music teacher. So, as things kind of, you know, roll out and we get closer to finalizing the budget, you know, that's something that we do feel is, is necessary for next year.
Other assumptions surrounding our expenditures. The TRS rate is projecting to be 10.5% next year, which is up from 9.52. The ERS rate is projecting at 14.6, which is up from the current 14.6. Health insurance, I projected a 4% increase based on historical averages. We won't have the final projections for that until next month, we're thinking, and debt services as per schedules, there's not any big fluctuations with that falling off or, or coming on this year. Equipment assumptions. In the budget, I included two all-wheel-drive sedans at 30,000 for 60,000 total that would be replacing two Ford Fusions that are getting pretty high in miles. The estimated auction back on those would be 16,000, so the net cost to the district would be 44. And that line for bus purchases is down 122 from last year. Okay? The proposed, we proposed a plow truck replacement. That vehicle is 45,000. It was in the 2021 budget, but we did pull it. We're revisiting it again. Estimated auctions international back to the district would be 20,000. So, the net cost to the district over the next five, seven years would be about $25,000.
Are you not proposing bus purchases then for this budget?
No, what, in talking with the transportation department, we had purchased two full-size buses this, last year to help with the social distancing and COVID in transportation. So, he doesn't feel that he has a need for that. The more pressing need would be the other two vehicles that are getting to a point where they're getting up in miles and, you know, repairs are going to start kicking in, in. So, first pass of expenditures for next year. For the 2021 year, we are, we were at 21,123,746. For 2122 preliminary, we're looking at 21,571,473. That's an increase of 447,727. A large portion of that, obviously, as you can see in there, is in the instructional area and employee benefits, and the bulk of that is salaries and benefit increases. Bottom line, taking a look at those expenditures, those expenditure figures compared to our revenue. In 2021, we balanced our revenue with the use of fund balance and reserves. This year, the difference between revenue, not talking about fund balance and reserve, we're, we're looking at a $1.2 million shortfall. Where, those numbers are still very preliminary. We're still looking at the budget expenditure side of things and, you know, what some of the individual items are, and we're going to be narrowing that down over the next couple of months. The revenue, again, the biggest piece of our budget is, 65% of that is the state aid. And we don't have numbers yet from the governor. There's always additionally on top of that, still that concern of him cutting the 20% or withholding the 20%. But there is a little bit of hope in that with the passage of the stimulus bill and how that, we're not sure though exactly what that's going to look like trickling down to the district. And then our next steps. At our next meeting, we're going to have another budget update, and we're going to have instructional presentations in February. And then that tax cap that we talked about, that's the next milestone for us in the budget process. That's due in on March 1st. Does anybody have any questions on the budgets they want to?
You, you said the instruction costs that 425,000, or 425,000, so that was salary and benefits for.
So, I'm sorry, yes, I said, this 447, the biggest change is in there. Mitigated by some other things, but. So, the biggest chunk of this, this instruction increase is salaries. Is salaries. John, do you want to talk about?
Yeah, I'm just going to mention to the board that obviously, this is, this is kind of on a worst-case scenario. If you take a look at the revenue, we just slid over the real property taxes. So, we have no increase in there, which I do think that there, there will be an increase in there. As far as the state aid goes, the governor did come out today, this morning, I don't know if you watched it. I tried to provide you, this is from the ASBO website. They do a very nice job of really summarizing what he mentioned this morning. The governor has two proposed budgets out there. His worst-case scenario budget is a $6 billion funding from the federal government. Basically, he's calling that, that if that's what New York State receives, basically, the, the federal government is saying, you know, drop dead New York. I think that was his quote. He is asking for $15 billion in funding from the federal government. I have a feeling that it's going to fall somewhere in the middle, which is what usually happens. And obviously, there's some caveats in the $6 billion and then in the $15 billion. So, we are currently hearing that the withholdings won't be 20%. They'll be somewhere around 5%. But again, there are just so many unknowns, and, you know, what he was saying today, you know, again, was, was political in nature, and it was clear as mud. So, if you check, you know, the Twitter feeds and the here's superintendents, we all talk, we just, we don't have any answers. You know, we heard them, we know what his, some of his proposals are, but we have absolutely no answers. So, just, you know, this two-pager that I provided to you, again, came from ASBO. I quickly just cut and pasted and highlighted some things for you. But we just don't have any answers. A lot of this is up for discussion because when they talk about, you know, $3.8 billion in, in extra support for education, number one, who's going to get that? And how, how is it going to be, you know, distributed equally? And then, second, we're just, you know, going to rob Peter to pay Paul. Is this actually $3.8 billion in new money? Or was it money already owed to us and it's just filling in our losses already? So, there's just a lot of unanswered questions right now. And so, Christine has worked very hard. You know, we sat down this morning for a lot of hours and tried to give you at least as much of, of a budget that we can. Things are going to change, they could change by next Friday. So, I know your eyes probably got really big when you heard a $1.2 million, you know, gap that we're looking at, but, you know, that is the worst-case scenario. You know, we already have had discussions of where we could, you know, round things down a little bit and not include things. So, again, you know, this, this budget does, you know, contain a lot of things that we're just going to have to massage over the next couple of months to get to where we need to be. So, I don't really know. If you have questions, I, I really don't want to get into where you're going to come up with $1.2 million and where you're going to cut, because we just, again, just don't have, have the answers. We don't even know if this budget is going to be, you know, 20, 21 point,
What question is?
21.5 million. We're just, we're, we're doing a lot of estimating at this point.
Is there any actual date where we'll know if the 20% withholding is going to be a cut? Or would, would that ever actually be decided in public?
We're hoping March 1st. And I can say that, but I, no. To answer your question, no.
So, how far can that continue to be pushed out and dangled and?
As long as they want it to be.
So, at what point do we as a board have to go forward as if that sort of dam of pleas is going to fall on us and it's not going to be there? Like, at what point do we have to formulate a budget without the 20%?
I don't have the answer for that. If you recall back in October, November, I had mentioned to the board that I was very, I wanted to be very cautious with the, the recommendation or to go forward and start cutting things, because this is the game that we're playing. And I, I honestly don't have that answer. When we get this information, the board will be the first to know. Christine will start crunching numbers. When things become finalized and this is what it is, you know, we're not going to know until the budget is, is, is approved. If, is it a $6 billion, is it a $15 billion, is it, is it in the middle? And then what does that look for schools? And even so, when they mention, oh yeah, schools are going to receive this amount of money, we don't know how that's going to land here for Oakfield. And that, and that's, that's the game that we play. It's, it's, you know, we have to be good estimators of it, you know, and obviously, Dan and Christine can tell you that. There's just a lot of unknowns and you're really, you know, flying a huge plane in thick fog when you're trying to put something together.
That's just been, that figure has been hanging over us for month after month. And it's, I'm not demanding it because I.
So, even the stimulus package that was approved in December, we don't really know what that even looks like for us, any district. We just don't know. And that's, and that's, that's, that's the concern.
So, the numbers you're showing us right now, that's showing a flat out of state, state.
Say that, say that again.
On state aid?
Right.
Correct.
So, if he were to actually hold that 20% back, we're looking at over $5 million.
Um, not necessarily.
Repeat that question, John?
20% of 14 million is 2.8.
Okay, I was going off.
Yep, yep.
But still, that would be, that's ideally what we're possibly looking at.
That's, that's the worst case. I'd like to remain hopeful. But, we, we have to, if, if you're, if you want a hard answer to have a May budget and meet all the statutory deadlines, we need to approve a budget in April. We've got time. We're going to get a lot more information between now and then, and we'll be able to iron things out a little bit better.
So, your transportation number was down. Where did I see that, somewhere?
It's right here, the 81.
Well, wasn't that other?
Other expenditure.
Oh, about the vehicle?
And this one here, does this, this 2021, so, so this one now?
Oh, the aid.
1.3 to 1.19, does this reflect?
You get the aid in the year subsequent to the expense that was created. So, my concern is why I'm saying this line, this item here, it's based on the prior year's expenses. I think that this might have been, there might have been, maybe it's a year that, and I, I have to look at 18, 19 data to know what drove that aid. And why that's higher and why this was a little bit less. It, it's based on the, the aid in the current year is based on the prior year expenses. That's what concerns me about this number for 2122. It's based on this year's transportation expenses.
So, none of that has anything to do with this sort of pulling the carpet out?
Well, this, well, it, yes, so partly. This is, this number here is based on 1920, and 1920 is where we had three months, where we didn't have as much transportation expense. So, yes, partly. Okay, but that's, again, like I said, that's why I'm so, I'm somewhat concerned about this being so bad.
And as far as how this year's going and what we're tracking to, to the end of the year?
Yeah.
And if there would be a budget access to be used for next year, what do we know about these things?
So, we're going to be looking at those numbers over the next couple of months and crunching, crunching some of those, seeing where we're at. I have already talked to the administrators this morning about having some, some meetings to talk about, okay, based on what we've, you were budgeted for this line and what we've spent so far. John, it's already implemented a purchase order freeze. We're only ordering things that are urgent, are emergencies. So, we're trying to pin that number down a little bit earlier to help with this, as you can see in prior years, when you're looking at the revenue. Sorry, I'm going the wrong way. Where am I? So, one of the things we, we've done is used fund balance from the prior year to, to fund a budget shortfall. So, in 2021, we used rollover money to the extent of 656. I don't know where we're going to end up at this point. We're, we're going to take a look at that and see if we can't pin that down. Yes, that is an option. There's always, the options always use of reserves as well. And, and I do have some numbers that we are looking at historical trends on fund balances, where we're at on that. I'm hesitant and that's kind of a last, last resort. We don't have to use that, we don't have to use that. But, yes, we are looking at current numbers. See if that can help, help us to purchase stuff for next year.
Can I cut into that? Oh, the 20% you're talking about, government five, is the aid that you received in this year, 2021? That would be due, is right?
Um. He didn't really say if they were, what, he, the threat was withholding for this year. But yes, we don't know if he's going to project for next year, when, if he's going to, how he's going to do it. Is he going to fund this year fully and then cut next year 20? Or is he going to do 20 and 20? No, I, who knows? I, yeah, nothing surprises me. So, right now, I'm not thinking it would be 20 and 20.
Like the grants in some of the other areas, the 20% has been withheld at present.
Yes, so the state, the state stuff he has, federal money's. So the state, the state stuff he has, federal money is.
UPK grant, yes. That's some of that stuff, yes.
And policy aid. So when you're planning though, with what you're thinking may have as fund balance to roll over to next year, expenditures not taking place currently, that, you know.
Well, but that could get eaten up with the loss of revenue. And so, and we won't know that. And the timelines, I think his deadlines were April 1st was one of the final ones. So we're kind of hoping that the stimulus money and everything will help balance some of that stuff out.
I apologize for not reading it. Did you say kindergarten aid is not being withheld 20%?
UPK is.
So we have $111,000 UPK budget. We would lose $20,000 there.
So it's what?
We could potentially lose $20,000 with that. We, they withheld it from their payment so far this year. So there's, you know, he's made the thread real, but if that is, does finalize and.
So we would be short $20,000 in this budget as well?
So potentially, that's, that's the threat.
Because the UPK is paid out of a grant. So we report that to the state of how many sections, how many kids, you know, a full day. You know, Lynn does a very nice job in putting that forth. And usually, obviously, we're fully funded for that. They decide to pull back and if it costs us, you know, $115,000 to, to run our two sections, and when we're fully funded, if they decide to pull 20%, that's over, you know, obviously, you know, $20,000, $25,000 that, you know, they'll turn around and give us, you know, 90 grand, not 115.
So basically, I think it's to explain and to make sure that I'm making it clear and I understand what Dan was asking and explain, is, is that 20%? Is he cutting 20% off of the 2021 aid and we're not going to get that? So we're not going to have money to roll forward for next year? Or is he saying 20% is going to be off of next year's? Correct? Or both?
Or both.
Again, anything's possible with them.
Your answer to Dan on that question was what?
We don't know. We don't know. I'd love to know, but we don't know. And what do we do? We'll, you know, start crunching numbers and see if we can't figure things out.
So we know some of the sports could go on, clubs and activities for this school year. Are we?
There, a couple of them are running, the ones that we can. Some of them have been put on hold. You know, there's, there's a, you know, a little bit of savings. I mean, it's, you know, if, if all of a sudden winter sports doesn't happen and maybe they're going to try spring, you know, there's monies in there that we had set aside for officials and the stipends for the coaches. I know that she sat down with Jeff and we have a great, you know, cycle of, you know, how are we purchasing things as far as uniforms and equipment? You know, but again, you know, we're still, one of the things that I'm going to mention to you is we still have no idea about winter sports and these higher sports. We don't know if there is going to be a basketball season, March 1st. Football and volleyball supposed to start. We've received absolutely no word on that.
Are we going to winter track this year?
No.
Is that not happening?
That's not happening.
Batavia's not doing it?
Batavia is, but they're not having outside.
Batavia's not inviting other schools that they have.
Correct.
So the four students that we offered, they didn't call, so I'm saying.
Correct.
As far as like the clubs and activities that we're not doing, is that for money reasons or is that for COVID reasons?
That's for COVID reasons.
So it's not all, it's not, I was trying to say money, it's.
Correct. You know, for example, you know, Wendy is, is having the musical, albeit probably not how she wants to do it, but, you know, we're, you know, she's trying to make it work. You know, we do have the virtual, you know, page turners and, you know, the math competitions and, you know, we're having mock trial. But there's other clubs, like Run Club currently right now is not going, just because it's hard to have the littles, you know.
So like for my, the banking, they decided not to do that at the banking level. The branch decided not to send people to the schools. So that's not ready. My building, we can't house and do abandoned course because I don't have the space with the 12 feet around. My building's too small. I don't have an auditorium in that manner. So some of those restrictions have pushed back some of those opportunities for our students.
But it's not, it's not a money issue. It's just a COVID regulation issue.
Band lessons, as you say, we haven't been able to do, offer the band lessons in the fourth, fifth instruments.
Yeah, it's, um, it's not, it's not the greatest, the greatest scheduling that we've had. I mean, Lynn and Matt can speak more to it. We do have a teacher going down to the elementary to provide it. You know, we're, we're just spread thin and, you know, we're, we're recognizing that. And, I mean, I don't know.
So we have Danielle and Roger come down to help Christian with the lessons for all current fifth grade students. The music department did not feel that it was under the COVID restrictions a safe option to open up new lessons because of the proximity and with that hand over hand and just not being able to be that close to a student. So fourth grade has not been invited yet due to the COVID restrictions. But knowing that next year we want to open up everything as normal as possible, we want to be able to offer fourth grade and we want to be able to do band for both fourth and fifth grade and get chorus back. So that's when you look at our numbers and say our scheduling is too tight to be able to offer that with only three directors.
Roger and Dan are doing an amazing job. Really spread pretty thin and they've taken on that challenge. Their schedule's spread pretty tight this year. So if we take some relief next year, not just for fourth grade, maybe a music class here or there, there's room to free them up as well.
Any other questions?
Just a detail. If you're coping with a music program with only three teachers, that's obviously been cut back some. So does that mean that they're not doing so many lunch doings and study halls?
I know in this building, Roger and Danielle, they're not doing lunch doings, that's right.
And my, they don't ever do lunch doings in my building. It's not part of their schedule. They're so tight with their minutes and we don't function on the prep system. We have a long summer minute, so I, I use the aid in a different manner along with various
Thank you.
Any other questions there? Thanks.
So just to give you a quick capital project update, DGA and SEI will be here along with myself and Jordan. And all day tomorrow, we will be doing a page turning of the capital project. Received about an 80-page document today from DTA in regards to the estimate of our $15.3 million capital project. As I mentioned to you, currently right now, the estimators are deeming our project at about $15.8 million. So we're about $500,000 over. Certainly not concerned with that at all. You know, we're going to sit down and look at the scope of, of each and every area. Over the past probably six months as we were doing this, we certainly included additional items as we went through. And obviously, we haven't gone out to bid. The SED paperwork is, is waiting for approval. We're hopeful to get that in mid-February at some point. So certainly, we're just going to go back and see, you know, to make sure that we're all on the same page. And then as we go out to bid, see what kind of responses we get. So certainly, this is kind of a normal procedure. You know, I don't think we have to cut $500,000 of work out. But we're going to sit down tomorrow and just review each and every aspect of, you know, the scope of the work. And I will have SEI come to our next board meeting to kind of present to you where we're at, you know, as far as that goes. Everything is, is on time and, again, we're just waiting for SED approval. And then, once again, you know, looking over things will, you know, SEI will present to you. And then there'll be some board approvals for certain areas of the capital project. And they're looking to hopefully start this spring. Hopefully get some work done before the school year ends.
Are they still anticipating that bids will come in low?
Yes, yes, we are. It's, it's funny because you offset that with probably the increase in some of the supplies and materials. But then you also have construction companies that know that they'll be in competition and they want to work. And our project is very appeasing and very attractive just because it is year-round. Some capital projects only occur during the summer. And since ours is year-round and there's some, you know, work that can be done on second and third shifts during the school year, you know, it, again, it draws a lot of attention from these construction companies that they, they want to do the job. So we'll see. I just want to thank everybody. Obviously, you know, we're back in session. I will tell you that it is very difficult to be in session and then have to go completely remote and then have to come back again. I just want to thank the administrators, the teachers. It's, it's, it's a, it's just a heavy lift to do that. You know, it's, it's tough enough when, you know, most of their kids are here, but they have, you know, a handful of kids that are remote. And then to go fully remote and then come back. And then there are families that say, well, I don't want to send my kid back. It's, it's not at all, you know, good. And I just want to thank everybody from, again, the administrators, the teachers, the cafeteria workers, the bus drivers, I mean, everybody here, the cleaners. It is just not an easy, easy thing to do, to be going, bouncing back and forth and really not knowing where you're going to be at the end of the week. And everybody's just doing the best they can and I think we're doing it right. You know, listening to, you know, you know, other, other programs and, and other districts, I think, you know, I'm very pleased to say that I think we're doing it right. The communication is there. The teachers are, are working their tails off and we're really doing our kids a good deed, you know, for what we have to offer them. Again, unfortunately, you know, you know, this, this is what it is. And hopefully, we find a, a cure and, and we can get back to normal. But I, you know, unfortunately think we're going to be like this for the remainder of the school year, where possibly just be in and out of, of all of this. But we're doing the best we can and at least trying to provide the kids as far as programs and extracurriculars, at least, you know, some normalcy. You know, I was asked by one of our superintendent representatives, you know, are, are you ready to go for athletics? And I said, we're, we're on board. We're ready to go. And we're just waiting for the powers that be to make a decision and they, and they won't. And that's, that's the most difficult thing. But, you know, we're trying to be as normal as possible here and I just, I just continue to thank the staff that we're working with here. It's just, they're just unbelievable, unbelievable.
What did the remote numbers do, John, before the new year versus?
I believe the middle of high school saw an increase of about 25 students. I believe they had about 40 or 50 and now we're up to about 70 or so that are remote.
It was kind of both back from remote, it was nothing from in the middle of the house or kind of whole block.
Yeah. And then Lynn's building wasn't, wasn't too bad.
No, I've got a couple of students returned. I'm at 14 total UPK to six, or five.
You've got about 14 remotes?
Yes, sorry, 14 total remote.
The issue is, is that when, when we have a positive case as of today, you know, now all of a sudden, that student that was here is on, on temporary remote, you know, for, for the next 10 days. And then all of a sudden, we do some contact tracing and the numbers came out that I believe another 20, 26 or so have to be quarantined. So now those kids are out. And then, you know, they, they were here and now, you know, the teachers have to adapt to, okay, now that kid is out and it's, it's tough. And then you get a couple of teachers that have to quarantine by no fault of their own. And now they're at home for 10 days and now they're teaching from home because they're well and we want them to teach. So now all of a sudden, they're from in-person now to sitting at home in front of their Chromebook, now teaching a class. It's, it's just.
Was it two teachers then from?
I believe it was one today.
One teacher from this?
Yeah. So, but you know what? They, they, they do it with a smile and, and continue to plug on and I can't, you know, can't thank them enough, so.
And then like 10 days from today?
That's correct.
So Matt, does that 70 include the 20 or so that are, those are by choice?
I haven't broken out who's chosen to and who's temporary and fluctuates. I hope they were up to 40 or 50 or so by choice.
Matt, if I want, if I want to go remote, let's say all of a sudden I want one of my kids to go remote in the high school, I can just make that decision and then?
Usually they point to me, I have a phone call with parents. What I do is just kind of communicate expectations and what we've seen. So the general message I send is we can make it happen at a moment's notice, but we don't believe it's the best way to learn. We will work with you and support you if that's the choice you want to make. And we also let them know that we'd like them to stay on long-term through the duration of the marketing period, but we can bring them back if they're not being successful and we will encourage that for not being successful.
Yeah, thank you. That's what you were saying from the beginning.
Yeah, that's the general.
That hasn't changed since August, I don't, I don't remember. So you don't see a big, I'm out remote for a couple of weeks and then, hey, I want to come back in because I feel like that's happening in a lot of school districts and it's a big issue where.
I don't see that happening. You know, it has a couple, has a tribe, one mother said, you have to get a little skittish. I'd like to keep out for a week. And what I said was, not really how it works. I understand her rationale was logical. I said, why don't you stay out for the next two weeks? Let's see how it goes and then at that time you want to transition her back to the building. But we're not seeing that as a major problem.
Because I could imagine if I was back in school and I wasn't able to play basketball, I might twist old times' arm a little bit.
Sure, yeah, make it known. All being of our favorite is this, so-and-so's going remote for today. They're absent today.
So then how do you know if they're absent or not? If they didn't show up for any of the, if they, if they made it to?
So if a student chooses to go remote.
Right.
We're marking the present, and this is a subtle shift we made after the building transition to remote. We're marking that absent or present within each of the classes. And I think it's been a nice transition from what the daily check-in we started around.
And now Lynn, how does that differ in your building? Because it now doesn't, it's not set up the same way.
I can't, sorry, it just kicked out.
So how does that work then in your building, Lynn? Because for Matt, it works five periods. So Justy's there at period one, but he doesn't show up for period three, four and five.
So we have the, the morning check-in like we would for everybody, your normal one-day attendance for the day. But then if a child has missed any of their live meets, they report that to me and I track that and JC tends to help me with home visits. Parents were, it's phenomenal to be able to communicate with families. Bogie constantly said, if you have an appointment, please let us know. So you'll see a remote student that has been dismissed at 1:30 for a doctor's appointment or a dental appointment because we're still keeping track of that and communicating as they would have been in my building.
Because it's really, it's a tough thing, I think, in the elementary to really track where they're at.
And it's going to depend on your age because UPK kindergarten students don't have the stamina, right? They don't want, we don't want them on the computer for that long. So more, more so top-down, fifth and fourth and third, do a lot more live, check in every period. And then, you know, first and second, it's, it's kind of when RTI providers can grab them and kind of work with them. If they're a special ed student, we're working with like resource renewal opportunities and things like that. So it really is almost functioning as two separate entities, UPK to one and then two through five.
Right. Because I just worry that gaps that are already there, especially for those RTI kids, are just going to widen. You only had 14, which is phenomenal.
And that's my biggest question is, you know, right now I have a family that they've struggled from the very beginning. We've done a lot on our end. We've done a lot of one-on-ones. We've got, you know, RTI providers pulling them. I've got an aide going in to help cover the teacher so the teacher can do a live meet. And the grades, they're just not producing. So I'm trying to meet with that family in person, whether I go to their house or they come to me, to really try and convince them to come back because I don't think I have the ability to retain at this point, depending on the governor's rules. But they are really going to struggle here on out if we can't bring them back into this level.
Right. And then it comes down to the attendance thing. I mean, I guess you could persuade them a little bit based on attendance policy, but right now, how bad it is in attendance policy, I don't, I don't know.
Those are all my journey questions that if you have any answers, you find them.
No, I'm, I'm just troubleshooting a couple of kids in high class right now of you guys.
All right, perfect.
I got you. Thank you for tomorrow. Thanks already.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The other two points I was going to mention, like you said, I handed out. The other two points I was going to mention, like you said, I handed out to you a, you know, summary of, of governor's, you know, budget plans. That came from ASBO. I did a little cutting and pasting for you. It'll be interesting to see where all of this plays out. I think the biggest thing is, once a budget is adopted, we're definitely going to need some clarity of the details of the distribution of it. You know, who gets what? What are the, what are the, the red tape that goes along with it? And, and, you know, like I said, from, for the next months to come, we'll, we'll just keep you, keep you in the loop. And then, like I said, the only other thing is we're still waiting on, you know, the winter sports guidance. You know, currently, right now, we do have swimming going on, there was a week here tonight. And we're just waiting on further decision on that. Other than that, go Bills.
Could I only ask you a couple of questions?
Sure, can.
To line up with the things I heard. Have the county, have the county guidelines for quarantining and contact tracing that they, I guess, impose on you to do? Have those stabilized or become more consistent?
Um, they are forever evolving. Currently, Mike, and as of tonight, and I'm sorry, what?
I said nicely put.
Yes. Currently, right now, the, the close contact is 60 minutes of contact in a day. And basically, you go back two days from the onset, onset of a symptom of a student. The quarantine period is now 10 days, not 14. So, so for example, if we take, if we take tonight, we had an individual test positive this afternoon. And so basically, we go back 48 hours because I believe the symptoms started today. And so we now trace back 48 hours. Here's the good thing, we only had to worry about today because obviously, we were off yesterday and through the weekend. So really, we only had to contact trace of who was within the same classroom with this individual for more than, really like two class periods, for, for more than 60 minutes. And that's what we, that's what we do. And then we make phone calls to the families of those students and say, your child now will be hopefully getting a call from the Department of Health, but we're telling you right now that your child will be asked to quarantine as of today for 10 days and please don't send them to school.
So they had the onset of symptoms today and they got tested today and they got their results today?
Correct. That's the rapid testing.
How'd they manage that?
What's that?
How'd they manage that?
You can go up to, what's the place in Batavia?
Urgent.
Urgent care, they now have the rapid?
On Tuesdays and Thursdays in Batavia, I think it's in the fire training. There's a clinic drive-through with rapid testing, so you'll get the results out of there.
And so you'll notice in that letter that I sent out this evening that, you know, I put, I put the date, the last time the, you know, student was on campus and it was actually today.
So that's been pretty consistent. Now, if they were 60 minutes in a room like this, would that be counted as close contact or does it have to be a clash?
Now, I'll let Matt, I'll let Matt further.
This room will not count.
So we were told, and, and I guess this goes to your question, I mentioned it in my email to you, we were told that the cafeteria, the auditorium, the library, and the gymnasium.
In both buildings or just this building? In both?
That was four up here.
Okay.
Lynn hasn't had the issues down in her building that we've seen up here. So the next...
That's changed.
Sorry. So I will assume that in her building, it would probably be just the cafeteria.
Not the?
And, and the gymnasium, I'm sorry.
So even though there are 50 or 60 kids in this room?
Lorna, I know where you're going with this question.
I'm just curious, I just got a...
I left the meeting a few minutes ago, you kind of go to walk out, I was on the phone with Ashton to come and we confirmed and asked the same question again. So if there's a cafeteria, it's okay. She said, yep, yep, yep.
You're right. And if there's 60 or 70 kids in here and they're six feet apart?
I wanted to know if the rules have changed, if the guidelines, she said, no.
It's because there's food in the room, remember? You went to the bar and you went to...
That's right.
You don't, you don't catch COVID, so I...
But that's why they're all closed, so. Okay. So then my next question, a follow-up here. Home visits by J.C. and Tim. Has anyone given you any pushback? And this is just my curiosity, thinking how I might feel when the sheriff's car pulls up to the house.
No, and J.C. can speak to that. I will tell you that Tim is not the one pounding on the door, he's not the one addressing the parents. He just gives J.C. a ride. I don't know if you want to go through what your home visits look like, but...
Typically, it's that we're there to troubleshoot why they're not being successful, why they aren't coming in and right, we need the support. I do get parents who sometimes wish their, wish that there'd be more communication from, from certain people and I come back and articulate that and ask for it to be increased, but for the most part, they're very grateful that we're coming out, checking on them and making sure that they're okay.
It's not a, it's not a punishment thing, it's not a...
Well, I know what you intend, I just wondered how it was being perceived.
I have not received one phone call in my, in my office for it. You know, they may be concerned in what's, what's going on here, but I know J.C. does a great job in explaining why, why they're there and what the reason for the visit was for.
And over last spring, I don't know how among you all it's been divided up now. You had those wellness check-ins or something if people were feeling distressed?
We had a forum for both.
And that?
Staff and students.
Right. How are your numbers there? How are, it was the emotional wellbeing, the reassurance or do you have any, is there anything to know about that?
No, the forums have stopped because the kids are back. The kids that are remote, you know, I, I do know the counselors, you know, we track those kids more so than the kids in here because we want to make sure that, you know, they're not working a job and, you know, they're keeping up. As far as staff goes, you know, we're here, we're walking around. I think the staff leans on each other as far as, you know, the colleagues go. So, you know, we, you know, you know, I, I did reach out to, and I know, I believe Matt did as well, that, you know, the teachers that, you know, were sick and, and were testing positive for COVID and, you know, I know that, you know, we reach out to the staff members, unfortunately, that have the quarantine, that are doing just fine. But, you know, we're not doing, you know, the forums or anything like that, so.
And the counselor that is down there, how is that doing?
She's doing fantastic. Actually, J.C. and I just had a, had a conversation. Did you end up talking to her?
I thought, yeah.
Her supervisor?
I think they're going to get the forums.
She is fully booked and we're trying to get her here two or three days a week. According to her, she said that that, that won't happen. So I tasked J.C., and this was the conversation at the end of last week, I tasked J.C. with the idea of calling the supervisor to see what we can do. And maybe it's not her, but can you send somebody else here on a Thursday? She's working out.
So is she only booked with people from outside or does that include people from inside?
From here, from here.
All from here.
Mm-hmm.
Both buildings.
Both buildings. There are some kids that transferred from seeing her at the Batavia campus to seeing her here, but all the kids she sees all day are our kids in one of the two buildings.
And can students be referred from these buildings to her?
We do. We are actively doing that. That's why we need more days because she's booked.
We worked, J.C. and the counselors worked together to create a forum so that we can use that as a way to track who was being recommended and then she takes the information after we make contact with the families to say they have the permission and then she goes through her process and gets them on a bi-weekly, bi-weekly basis, I think, between the two buildings.
So she contacts parents and gives permission and all that?
Well, we give them, we give the, the initial permission to share their contact information so that she can call them, but she does all paperwork as far as insurance and stuff and she runs through all of that with them so that that's a secure confidential process for her.
Okay, thank you. And our part-time school psychologist, how's that working though? Do the testing?
Corinne is back.
Oh, okay.
Yep. He was here for a handful of hours doing some evaluations, bare minimum, just, that was a quick, quick fix to the absence, but she's back.
Any other questions for you? Okay, thanks, John. New business. Will be resolved that items eight, two through eight, three, be approved via consent agenda? Motion from Justin.
Second.
Second from Lauren. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes. Communications? Don't believe we have any. Discussion roundtable?
Can I just say one thing based on last week? Or last one? We had all of those donations and because we had so much COVID and stuff, I felt like we didn't fully acknowledge those. And so those generous donations of the money and the piano and the supplies for the senior class, I just wanted, I know we were all grateful, I just wanted to acknowledge that again, that that was really very kind and very wonderful that people made those donations to that piano and the funding and I, I just thought we brushed it off and I wanted to say thank you publicly to those people.
The piano has been picked up and it's here in the chorus room. If you want to take a look at it?
All tuned in?
I don't know. I think she was going to have it tuned, but it's here, so. Anything else, Sam? Okay, and the personnel, will be resolved that personnel items 11, two through 11 or be approved via consent agenda? The motion? And Dan?
Second.
And, and the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes.
I didn't catch who made those motions.
Dan and Pete.
I'm sorry?
Dan and Pete.
Thank you.
No executive session tonight, so on to closing remarks. Tim, do you have any closing remarks for us?
I'm going to have unmuted, unmuted mic.
If you have closing remarks, Tim, you'll lead on.
You can use the device.
Tim, Tim, we need you to unmute the mic. Is he on? Can you unmute him?
It's the bottom middle, Tim. Yeah, you have to unmute your own mic and it's in the bottom middle, you look for the red circle. Looks like a microphone, move your mouse to the bottom middle. There you go, you got it.
That better?
We got you. Thanks, Tim.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I know, you know, things are tough with being in school and being remote and I just wanted to say that, you know, I think the superintendent and the staff have, have done an excellent job navigating these, these difficult waters. The other thing too, I was wondering if it'd be possible to get a list of the elective courses that are going to be offered so we can review them?
We can certainly get that for you. I'll catch you later. Anything else, Sam? Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Jack?
Um, yeah, I, going back from remote, transitioning back in and out, I, I mean, I just want to say with three kids at different grade levels, I think that went very well, it was much smoother, very organized, I think, on all fronts. And it just, I mean, it got top toward the end and I know everybody's back, glad to be back in, but I do think it went a lot better this time around, just being prepared for it. So I think everybody did a great job and I'm super grateful for the effort, the work and all the adjustments that they teach. I can't imagine the amount of effort it takes to do that. I mean, I know, it's just a lot, so incredible how it, it actually went, glad to be back. And it's just on a plug side note, I hear all the swimmers leaving and it's just so nice to hear cheering of some sort and like life in this building. So they know it's a big disappointment and all the sports aren't going on, but kind of look at the cup half bowl and just be grateful for what we have and celebrate the, the wins and the positives and that's certainly nice to hear, so good job, everybody.
Laura?
Oh, yeah, I, well, you better try it a couple of years and I cannot imagine the difficulty of teaching this way, so I am so grateful to the people who keep plugging away to make it happy, happen and for all of the cleaners and all of those people, it's just such an incredible honor.
And I'm grateful. I'm grateful that Oakfield, Alabama has survived it and keeps going forward. And I want to encourage all the teachers and the staff and the cleaners and all those people doing all that in light of all the uncertainty that's coming. So thank you to everybody who's doing that. And I don't want to lose sight of our goals, so I want to make sure we still do have a rounded program of education when things get normal. So I do want to, I'm also interested, that's great minds think alike, we didn't plan it ahead, but I would also like to know about our electives and see what, the breadth of what we're offering as we go forward and plan for next year.
Yep. Thanks, Justin.
Uh, it was a nice weekend, right? And then we had to go back to school today. I was talking to a bunch of people up in my hallway and it feels like we should be close to June, but we're not. And I don't know what that means, but I know how it feels. And I think my kids enjoyed the first, like, hour and a half to two hours of being remote at home, but then reality hit and it was tough. It was really tough. And I've got the age range, you know, from 12th to pre-K right now in my house and all in between. And it's, it's, it's hard to have that motivation when they don't have the ability to connect with the staff that's here. And I think that that's, that's what our kids are lucky to have, is the staff that motivates them, they want to get here and they're excited to get back. I talked to a lot of other districts and they're jealous of this situation, to be able to see their kids all day because it's really hard to, to make that connection online and I think they're doing, they did a great job and I'm glad that my kids are back. So again, thank you, administration and staff out there for working so hard every day. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm happy to have our girls back, happy to see the students back in the school. And thank you to, you know, all the staff and the teachers and everybody that's helping them happen and who knows, who knows what the spring between now and June will take a day or two, so.
Yeah, same thing. I think really, John, the way you handled the situation, I would honestly say it was a quick decision, but I thought you got it pretty swiftly and it turned out to be absolutely the right thing to do and I think it was very well planned out. Just, you know, I think even that week, you know, staying back that week when we were supposed to come back, that probably helps a lot too. And just when I kind of heard what was going through the community and stuff with certain kids and families, worldly stuff, but all the teachers and stuff, everything went off without a hitch, you could tell there was a plan, they were prepared and, you know, it's sad to say that it was good to see it happen so good because hopefully, we don't have to see it, but, you know, I think it just definitely was really great and, you know, I think your plan, John, of just, you know, how to approach it and taking that extra week off and just go with it and it went well.
Thanks, Pete.
I don't think there's anything I can say that hasn't been said, other than maybe we can start seeing a little bit of luck on all of them. There's still a lot of uncertainty, maybe with the vaccine, but, you know, vegetarians are staying. are still steaming, you know, we don't know what the governor's going to do, so I don't want to be non-moon, but, you know, with everything else that's been going on, I just hope and pray that it starts coming out of this, so just keep up a good fight, and do a great, and run versus count. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. We got a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Justin?
Second.
And Lauren's the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes. We start adjourned at 7:32.